And speak into this again about four inches, five inches away. That's about as loud as it's gonna be. And then when you're done, I would just click.
Good afternoon, everybody. It is five o'clock or a little bit after five, so I want to welcome you all and call this meeting to order, please. Madam Clerk, if you could please call, roll call.
Yes, Madam Chair. Ms. Burns, here.
Ms. Cooper.
Ms. Dooley.
Here.
Mr. Morse.
Here.
Mr. Meyer.
Ms. Richardson.
And Ms. Torres.
Yes, thank you so much. And may I have a motion to approve our agenda, please?
A move to approve our agenda is presented.
Second, the motion.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Thank you. Have love. We got you. Hey, I want to welcome everybody again, and specifically, do you want to draw attention? This is a wonderful opportunity that we have, and so I'd like to welcome Senator Deeds, Delegate Coulson. So a great opportunity for Charlottesville City School Board to sit with, with the two of you face to face and kind of discuss and review what some of our priorities are, what has risen to the top, and to hear from you what you all are working on and what you hear from your, from Richmond. So we really, really appreciate you taking the time to be here with us this evening and everybody else who can make it. So I just, for the sake of those joining us, I do want to just remind everybody quickly and just quickly reviewing some of our strategic plan goals and our different priority areas, and the first priority being to increase academic achievement, to provide a culture of safety, wellness, and belonging, to support our staff, and to ensure effective and efficient operations. Legislative priorities, really, really important. They kind of help us set policy, helps us advocate for the needs of our students, our staff, community, and these priorities guide our efforts to increasing equity and student and teacher supports. By focusing on these areas, it helps us aim and shape the policies that we work on together. So again, we want to express our gratitude. We have provided, I think, paper copies for you all, if you, if you grab those on your way in, that kind of summarize some of the things the school board members have talked about in previous meetings. So we do look to have school board members, anybody who wants to speak up and about a specific topic, and we're not held specifically to what's on here. So if something else has come up and since we met, met or spoke about this in the, in our last setting, please feel free to, to speak up. So again, we did put this summary together of some of the priorities and the topics that came up. And if you don't mind, can I pump this one to you? So the first one, yeah, that came up was, was funding for, I think so. Sorry, maybe it was the slide, but we can go out of order. Do you mind doing that, Ms. Dooley?
Not at all. So this, and I think Senator Deeds, we talked about this briefly at the summit ribbon cutting ceremony, but a concern that was brought forth by our preschool team is that slots are allocated by age as opposed to holistically for preschool. And so it becomes a little bit of a shuffle for our preschool team to allocate or to really identify how many students we can serve. It impacts other jurisdictions so that we can ensure that we have enough in the shuffle of allocating between the ages. And so this would be a request that could it be total preschool dollars and slots as opposed to being tied to specific ages? And I don't know statewide how many school districts are serving both three and four-year-olds. I think Charlottesville is a little bit of an outlier, as we tend to like to be, in, you know, providing services to both three-year-olds and four-year-olds.
Sure. Yeah. School funding is kind of like a tube of toothpaste. You squeeze it one place, it's got to come from someplace else. I, I like the idea of combining three, three and four-year-olds of getting children ready for first grade as quickly as you can. And I think school divisions all have flexibility to do that. There are a lot of school, there are some, I don't want to say a lot, but there are some school divisions that don't, aren't as interested in three-year-olds. And somewhere, it's probably not practical. Some very rural districts, it's probably not practical, but I think school districts ought to have flexibility to provide funding. I'm willing to look at alternatives, ways to make it, give you more flexibility to do what you need to do.
I don't have much additional to add, other than obviously I'm supportive of expanding preschool program to the extent that we can. And I didn't realize that there was that issue where we're allocating it based on whether you're three or four. So happy to explore ways that we can potentially combine that to make funding more streamlined for you guys.
So to that line, excuse me, are either of you aware, I mean, who or how can we best support you all in advocating for that? Or who would be writing bills for that?
This, this has more to do with the budget than with an actual bill. You know, it's more, more question of getting the budget amendment before the, the right people. And the Subcommittee, Mamie Luck is the Chair, the Education Subcommittee, the Senate Finance and Appropriations Committee. Probably, I would probably be asking her to put it in on the Senate side, on the House. I'm not sure who the, the Chair, the Education Subcommittee of House Appropriations, but that's where this issue is going to be addressed, I would think.
Yeah, I would just echo, if you guys want to get me like a one pager on it, I can pass it along to someone on the House side on appropriations who would be seeing it. Cause I would not be, it would be a budget amendment. I'm happy to put in the budget amendment, but you want to have an advocate who, who's carrying it, who gets to make a decision on it.
And I'll do, I would, I'll do the same as Katrina. As a practical matter, though, you probably want to get somebody who's on the Education Subcommittee to, to deal with it on both sides. So Katrina and I can certainly put the amendments in, but we're going to be rushing to find co-patrons who are actually on, on front lines on this issue.
I'll reach out to, Amy is not on appropriations, but she is on the Education Committee, so she might be better connected to those folks. So reach out to her.
That's where, I mean, Ms. Sparks, I'm sure can speak more eloquently than I on this topic, if she could help with the one pager.
And I think while, sure, we'd love more money. That would be great, but what we're really asking for is that pool of money just to be for everyone, not just three and just four. So it may not be as big of an ask. Again, more money's great, but it's really saying this pool of money is for all-inclusive, three, four, not 10 for three and 10 for four.
So semantics of.
Really. How the money moves.
One thing to think about is that in the context of that JLR report we've received about a year and a half ago that showed how we were underfunding K through 12, there's ongoing work to revise the whole funding formula and to come up with a way to provide more funding for, for education. So it, it makes sense through your, I guess, the School Board Association to stay involved with that, that work group.
Thank you. Excuse me again. Again, you know, unanimous support for our one cent, our 1% sales tax. I know we got so close or as close as we've ever been, and I don't know what, what, what you all are hearing from Richmond this year.
Yeah, I can chime in on that one. And it's out there right now. That was actually a bill introduced by Republicans, rural Republicans years ago. So the fact that it's not passed this far down the road is problematic, I think, to say the least. We, Democrats introduced it this year. It passed with two-thirds of the vote of the General Assembly, so it had broad bipartisan support. We thought we were as close as we were ever going to be, and it was vetoed. And it's the only bill that we actually tried to override the veto since we had two-thirds of the vote. But at that point, some of the Republican support, understandably, I guess, faded away because they didn't want to go against the governor. So it did not pass. It's a great bill. I do know to your question, I've had some conversations about it. I introduced it. I was one of the people who introduced it last year. Sam Rasul ultimately is the one that carried it. I believe I, he is, I can't speak in absolutes, but I've heard that he's interested in introducing it again this year. So I think it will be back up this year for question and debate.
In general, you know, Republican legislators introduce these bills to affect individual localities. Halifax, I think, was the first, and I never thought, they don't have any retail base at all. I didn't think, I didn't think that it would affect them, but they were able to build a new high school with that 1% sales tax increase. It made a difference down there. And Republicans generally started, but there were always Democratic governors. Now running for the next thing, president. And so he vetoed the bill. With the bill we had last year, the bills we had were not individual localities, but they were open every, any locality in the state. And that's probably, you know, that, that frankly is, is the way you need to do it. Because everybody's got school construction needs. Everybody does. Rural localities, urban localities, even suburban localities, everybody has needs. You know, I, I will tell you, Amherst County, down next to Lynchburg, I did 32% last year in my reelection campaign. It's a terribly Republican county, but that school board asked me for this, this legislation. There's support for this bill everywhere. There's support for this concept, but you just don't have a governor that will sign the bill.
Yeah, and just so you all know, the version that ultimately was presented was, you know, it's a, it's a sales tax by option with a referendum approved by voters. You guys know as well as any of us that our school buildings are aging. They, they boomed in the seventies, fifties, seventies, like this is, I can't imagine, it's going to have to pass at some point because we got to fix our schools, and that's, that's too big a cost to take on in just like your standard operating budget. So.
So is that an automatic that we're going to see it again, or who?
The only reason I don't speak in absolutes, there's bill limits. So right now is right when everyone's juggling. I was told that it was going to be introduced again. I can't, I can't be certain of that. But everyone, so last year, when there's no bill limits, everyone puts in everything and we just combine them, but when everyone, we only have 15 bills. So it's a little more like communication. Well, well, if you're going to introduce it, then you introduce it so that I can introduce these other ones. And my understanding is that this one will be reintroduced.
Okay.
There are really strict bill limits. You know, I think we have to weigh which, which 15 of the 40 or 50 ideas that you've got have the best chance to get passed and signed in the hall, making a difference to people's lives. This is a bill that, that got vetoed last year. We'll probably get vetoed again. There, there's an argument, but there's one argument that says, well, I fight losing battle because you know he's going to veto it, and you know, we're not going to be able to override it. There's another argument that we need to keep fighting the battle to let people know that we're not giving up. So, and they're both good arguments, but I, and so my sense is, you will see it again, but I was told is absolutely right, you know, with, with the bill limits, it's difficult to say what bills are going to be introduced right now.
I was told it was getting introduced. So I will let you know if I hear otherwise, but that.
Always, you know, let us know, please, and we can pass on to city council if, you know, there's a need for voices. I mean, we, we tend to always show up at the hearings, so we appreciate that. Thank you. All right. Anybody else have anything to say on that? No, okay. Is priority of implementing recommendations, again, the JLR committee, specific to the SOQ funding shortfall with an impact, you know, addressing the SOQ funding shortfall, improving overall education funding. So I know, I know that they're, they're looking at that, so I don't know if there's any bills that you're aware of.
Right now, I'm not aware of any bills, but this, this is a big lift. You know, it's probably going to end a thing, but it's probably not the sort of thing that would come in the middle of a budget cycle. Where, you know, this is the second year in the two-year budget cycle. And so my guess is when legislation's ready, it would be in, in the first year of a budget. But I don't know. I'm not on, I'm not on the work.
I guess what I would share with y'all from my experience was there's definitely a lot of interest in raising our SOQ funding. It's also, as Senator Deeds alluded to, just a lot of interest in overhauling the way that we do funding in general, because it's, it's complicated, it's jurisdiction-specific. It creates really disparate educational experiences across Commonwealth. The only thing that I proactively have heard of in this, around mental health supports, SOQs, that I think maybe made traction. It's hard, it's hard to follow bills through their whole completion because we'd celebrate them as wins, and then like three months later, you know, you'd have to follow up to find out they'd be vetoed. I have heard, the big bill that I've heard education-wise, for y'all to be aware of this year, is that there is a Math Numeracy Act that would be drawing sort of from the success of the math or the Reading Literacy Act. But it's different for the Math Numeracy Act. I'm, I'm more generally more support, well, I'm supportive of the Literacy Act to some extent as well. But the Numeracy Act is about raising math education, math specialists not being part of an SOQ to inadequate numbers. So that I know is going to be tackled this year. I believe Delegate Simons is bringing it. I know that it has it back in the VA, and there are people working that. So that should hopefully give some relief and help with at least math funding portion. That's a big push that I know is going to be happening. I would have loved to carry that. I fought for it. I think, I'm a former math teacher, but people better than me are carrying it. So I'm hopeful about that one.
Just, just different. Not better. Passionate, right? You're passionate.
Very passionate. I'm like all for that. I mean, I think that's great that we're tackling math. It's where, it's an equity issue, honestly. I think it's where we see the most tracking and, and so anyway, excited about that one. That one should be a big push this year that you'll be hearing about.
Oh, just is it, are there other, where we continue going through our list?
You know, I'm up to my elbows right now in, in mental health and, and healthcare-related stuff, and we can talk about that all night long. But I don't know that that's going to change what the Charlottesville School Board's priorities are.
That's our number two here, student well-being, so certainly ties in.
Well, I'm doing a bunch of criminal justice, and I hope it does not tie in, tie into y'all that much. A lot of trying to do some reform around the, just our criminal justice system and how it works for people who are in prison. So happy to talk to y'all about that at a later date. As far as education, the biggest one that I've been trying to work on was the Math Numeracy Act. I'm hoping I can be a chief co-patron on that and, and help move that along, and I'm excited about that one, mainly because I think it's really, it's not, you know, the Literacy Act told y'all, here's the eight things you have to use to do reading instruction. That's not what this is. This is, here's a list of good vetted ones. Use those if you want. Here's extra money so that you can have better math instruction. There is a little, they're also, I think, trying to do a bonus for this one and apply to you guys, but for those rural areas that are really struggling to get math teachers right now, trying to do, write in a bonus so that you go do math and.
We always love hearing when there's money attached to it.
That's exactly right. That's a, that's a good one.
And not mandated without funding support. So you mentioned this, Delegate Coulson, a little bit, and this is really, I think, Mr. Myers, who was, who was not able to join us this evening, but really was interested in just talking or granting school boards more authority to raise revenue. And I don't know if either of you have thoughts on what that might look like, or if there's any.
I have thoughts. Thoughts and prayers. I don't, I have not heard, I have not heard of that being introduced this year. I think it'd be a really, really long shot, this governor. I don't imagine. And as Senator Deeds said, people are really weighing what's got a possibility and what some people are trying to message. They know it's not going to pass this year, maybe in the future, but I just don't, I have not heard of that. I don't see that being brought. In fact, if anything, what I would tell y'all as a former school board member is, I feel like there's more of a push recently, especially with this administration, to kind of legislate down to school boards. So I, you know, the, I think I saw somewhere about making sure that y'all retain your, you know, kind of autonomy to do your own governorship. I think that's probably, we'll see maybe some bills that talk about that. We're going to see bills probably about on cellphone usage because the governor passed the, that mandate, and that's very, that's a lot of conflict around that. So I don't know what that's going to end up, but probably bills more in that vein. I don't see a future for revenue raising for school boards at this point, especially if like the 1% sales tax can't even pass.
And I, I think Katrina is right. I don't, I think it's not now, not going to be something that happens now. I think it's going to take a constitutional amendment to do it. Locals, our school boards are, are the toughest elected position in Virginia, period. You can make all the promises in the world, but you have no ability to raise the money to fulfill those promises. Maybe nobody else that gets elected to a representative body in Virginia is in that position. You are, but you asked for it, right? And, and part of the trade-off to get elected school board years ago, because it passed in 93 or 92, maybe, it was on the ballot. The, the only reason it got passed, our large part was because you didn't get elected. You didn't have toxin authority. We, one time when I was in the House of Delegates, I think we passed something to give you toxin authority. That was 25 years ago. And, and had, it hadn't really raised its heads since then, but, but I certainly support it. I think it makes sense. I think we need to come up with a way to divide the real estate tax or something so that you have part in the board and the city council has part or something. You've got to be able to raise your own money. You shouldn't be beholden to your, your elected representatives. You shouldn't be beholden to other elected representatives to get funding. To, to me, that's, that's just an untenable position, but it is what, it's what we've got, what we've had since 1992.
Let's see. So yeah, so our next priority in the topic is student well-being. So again, the priority here would be, or the, the thought was increased funding for substance abuse and mental health counseling. And I know that we and our, our team here at Charlottesville City Schools are, are working, you know, diligently to try and partner with Region 10 and other groups to provide the supports within the schools. But I mean, there are limitations, and I, I think we're probably not alone in the sense that, that we feel like our students could use more supports, direct, one-on-one supports earlier on. So what have you got brewing, Senator Deeds?
I would love for every community service board in the state have a, a station on every jail and, and also in every school. But, you know, we've got 40 CSBs. They are as disparate as night from day, and, and candidly, it all comes down to funding. Everything comes down to funding, right? Everything when it comes to governmental services. And, and some CSBs receive funding, receive adequate amounts from the local governments, some don't. You know, on the, nationally, we're, we're probably about average or a little bit better than average for what the state give, puts in the local mental health services. We aren't, we're, we're wagging the tail with, when it comes to local government support. Charlottesville does a good job. Charlottesville, Albemarle County does a good job. There are a lot of localities that don't, that don't do a good job. I, I think we need to, we need to, we've worked really hard the last 10 years to make school counselors really counselors, not just, not just got career path counselors, not just test creators. But again, that, a lot of it comes down to what you talked about mandated services. We can't really do more unless we're willing to, to come up with the funding for more. In my view, we, we have to, there's, there's too much at stake, and we have such a complicated society these days that we, we've got to put real counselors in here that can help, help young people. We've got a crisis with our teenage population with mental health. The, the reality is that 70% of mental health, people with serious mental illness have their first episode sometime between the age of 14 and 24. So the chances are, if it's going to happen, it's going to happen in front of you all. So we have to do a better job. We're working on it all the time, but we're not, we're not doing enough quickly enough.
I know. Does anybody else have any comments or concerns about that? Or anything to add? Yeah. No, I mean, we all are, yeah. Not just me. Okay. Support legislation promoting gun safety measures. Again, enhancing school safety and reduce risk of gun-related incidents. I know this is very important to both of you. Go ahead, share.
Yep, and you okay with that? She go first, yeah. So you're going to, there's a lot of legislation coming from the Democratic-controlled General Assembly. We had a lot last year as well. Not a lot, we didn't get a lot of it all the way past the finish line. A lot of it got vetoed. I believe a lot of it will be coming back. I want to, I believe y'all did be safe. Y'all are putting be safe material out to your children now. Awesome. Well, I want to comment on that. That's great. There was some legislation around that, and it actually got vetoed. It was from Delegate Cohen around just, I don't even know if it was a mandate, but encouraging school boards to send out one piece of literature a year, talking about safety that they shouldn't have. There's a lot of other great bills that were introduced. Amy had one around locking your car if you have a gun in it. There were ones around guns in hospitals. There were ones that Cree and I carried around, not allowing guns on college campuses. They were almost all routinely vetoed. One that passed was around 3D printing of guns. There's like a little piece you can 3D print on a gun that makes it much more dangerous, like, I don't know gun talk, but continuously shoot. That got through. So there have been some wins, but very few, I believe, and I would get, they're coming back. I believe they're coming back. I would tell you that they're coming back. It's, it's a really high, it's nascent, but I think there's some talk around this new way that Medicare's working or Medicaid's working where you can actually draw down some dollars for gun violence interruption programs, and there's been some talk about that in our local community with some of the programs that we have. So I don't know if that will end up happening, but that's maybe one way that we can see some help in our community.
In 2020, when Democrats controlled the Senate and House, had a governor, we passed legislation to create the universal background check. We passed legislation to create a red flag law to, to emergency removal legislation. We passed a number of bills, but we didn't, but we still have things to do. And this, we didn't know what this governor was going to do because he didn't talk about when he was running for governor. He never talked, he never taken a position or anything. He didn't have a record on it. We sent him a raft of bills, including the, the bill Delegate Coulson talked about, and several bills that she talked about, plus an assault weapon bill. He vetoed all those bills. There's still serious issues, and we're still going to pursue them.
And it ties to, I'm sorry, I can't stop. Give me a mic. I can never stop. It ties, really no one listens to me. It ties to the mental health component, because I always just think it's such a compelling fact that people think of, prepare for, but it's suicide. Suicide's the number one gun violence death that children experience, and that is preventable if you just keep guns out of the hands of children that are in crisis. So we had bills around that, just like locking up your gun. So that's where I'd love to see growth in the future, because that is such an easily graspable, preventable death of a child. So anyhow, I think we'll see them again.
So I'm curious, and I am aware that, that the sessions change alternating years as far as the number of days that you all are working on this stuff, but I, I personally had not heard the 15 and 15 limits. So is that 15 new or total?
Total.
Total. So how do you all prioritize, or do you kind of layer things in as far as?
For, for me, it's a matter of following up on the priorities that, that I've already been working on or where I've got the best chance to get a bill passed. If I've got a bill that I know is going to get vetoed, I'm less likely to put that in. You know, it, because I, because I think we get elected to get things done, and if we can't get it done, making a point's not enough for me. I want to get things done.
Yeah, I would just echo. It's really interesting. I have a chart, so I take all the ideas. I'll add, we haven't necessarily gotten a bill out of, idea out of this. I had the budget amendment just to work on that, but I have a long list. I try to prioritize them. It's a whole mix of like what might consider that in general, I'm not trying to introduce bills that I absolutely know are going to get vetoed, unless there's a strategic reason, like access to counsel at first appearance is one that, you know, the LJAC wants every year, just because it's a saying to a point, like this is important, even though we know, you know, stuff like that. But no, yeah, it's just a tough year. Next year, we can do as many as we want, early year after next.
Well, that's good to know, and we'll, we'll keep adding to our list and really hit you up for next year. All right. I think the next topic that we had was advocating for fair assessments for English language learner students, ensuring equitable evaluation of our English language learners. And I know some of this, I believe, and all of you experts in the room, correct me if I'm wrong, that, you know, some of the changing, or some of that is changing as far as next year and how they're being evaluated or the tests for those. I mean, I personally feel like assessing, and you probably remember this, Ms. Coulson, being on the school board, just as far as how their tests and how that impacts schools accreditation, and not that it's all about that, but about the student and how they feel about themselves. So please, other people speak up if I misspeaking about anything.
I would ask you all, I, I think there's a battle brewing, political talk in that sphere that I've definitely got in wind of, that there's, well, I would be completely candid, that there's this push to kind of make it so that then we have schools have lower accreditation, because ultimately, I think there's somewhat of a goal to, to move toward over testing them. And then you're saying they're not doing well. It supports whatever model you want that's not public schools. So I do think that, just so you're aware, since this is, you know, back and forth, that's something I've heard of politically from leadership, is just that, hey, you know, have your ear to the ground around potential accreditation changes. Try to see through whatever the shiny pamphlet says and, and look at what it really means for our students. And I would love any feedback y'all have, if y'all hear about things that you're being asked to do that are not actually what's best for children. That's helpful information for me to have and bring to my leadership and into people in the caucus about what's really going on in schools.
I, I think in that vein right now, and this kind of ties back into the, it definitely aligns with the SOQ funding priority that was mentioned earlier. But right now there's a lot of new that's being placed on teachers. And I think in this era where we are talking about how we attract and retain teachers, it's very, I mean, it feels like this mixed message when we want to attract and retain them, but we're asking them to do more with less. And, and so when we think about our English language learners, what they need is not aligned to SOQ. And then we are going to test them. We're going to assess them the same as their peers after we've reduced the number of months when we start to assess them the same way. So it's just this really, I mean, every facet of education is being touched with some of these things that are being required. So I mean, while I think no teacher disagrees that, you know, we want, they want high quality teaching instruction. We all want that. The school board wants that, but it's the rollout at the state level. It's like, you know, very little input from the school districts and go do it. And then we're changing the accreditation model. So we know that teachers are working, teachers and staff and principals are, but then we do this accreditation model that says you're on track, off track, and not making the target. So essentially it's like a letter grade. So, and then as the teacher, it's like, well, do you even value my worth if this is how you are going to rank me? So it is disheartening to see what's happening with our English language learners. You know, I mean, in Charlottesville, I think we predicted, I remember last years, we're going to be sitting at about 20% of our student population will be multi-language learners. And there's not a lot of money associated to educating this demographic of students properly, but we do a great job. We spread our resources then. We're always going to make it work, but I, I don't think that we should continue to ask teachers to do more with less.
Mic drop noted.
I was just going to bring this up. Yeah. So the next one was changed the selection method of, of members of the State Board of Education from appoint, you know, governor appointments to election by local school board members on a congressional district basis. You know, for the accountability purposes and the diversity, you know, and this speaks a little bit to what, what I think you were getting at. Delegate Paulson, as far as just, it does feel like it's very strategic at times, you know, as far as how things are happening and what the preference of education should look like by some.
I, I am smiling because this, I was going to say, when you're talking about the just commands coming from on high, I try not to do mean tweeting. It's getting harder and harder every day. But the one mean tweet I did was around a board of education. It wasn't even mean. It was just truthful around the board of education, which is I expect and Virginians deserve to have members on our board of education that have experience with education. They're literally making decisions for all of us. They better have done something in a school, with the school, in the education sphere. That's like a bare minimum requirement, I would think. And I was shocked as a relatively new legislator to realize that apparently doesn't have anything to do with who's up there. So I've not heard this idea, but as you can see, I probably be, I, it sounds great because you know, it's, it's probably there'd be some, I mean, let's get back to professional here. They, it'd probably be some balance of power issue. I do hear a lot about like, we don't step on the, you know, we don't step on the executive branch, don't step on judicial. But it's interesting take that clear to all the people I can, that we need to do a deeper dive into who's going to the board of education and make sure at the bare minimum, they're not all going to be Democrats. We have a Republican governor pointing them, but I would like them to have education experience. I feel like that's the bare minimum that I want and that Virginians deserve.
I, I've not thought of this idea before. I mean, I've, I've never seen this idea presented before, but I, I agree with delegate Carlson. It's worth thinking about, you know, and anytime somebody, somebody other than one, a member of our party is governor, we, we are concerned about appointments. This, you could apply this to every board. You could apply this to every appointment that there ought to be some more qualifications. Something like this probably would require constitutional change in Virginia, Virginia constitution. But what, and this is, this gets that, the appointments right now, the governor can pick who he wants. They have to be approved by us. We turn those appointments down. We, and we have the right to reject them. And I think we're going to reject some of his appointments this year, but that doesn't mean we get to pick the replacements. He does. So it's the sit, the way it is right, we, we've tried in the term governor. You know, we're the only state of the 50 that has a one-term governor. There've been a lot, there's been a lot of interest in two-term governors over the past, past years. But you, you can argue that the Virginia governor, even though he only has one term, this power of appointment that a lot of governors don't have. We, we have, there's been part of negotiation of a two-term governor appointment. There's been a lot of resistance to that. So this is, this is, this is an ancient problem, but, but I, I know exactly what you're talking about. I know where you're going. And I don't disagree with you.
And keep raising awareness because this is where they're leaning in is education. So not just public education, but the board of education and then university boards are where a lot of appointments are happening that it's like, and it's a whole strategy, you know, you, you've proposed 20. I don't, they're not all terrible. I'm just saying this to, to illustrate the point, but you know, you do 20 really terrible ones that then we have to agree to like 20 kind of, you know, terrible ones because you're like, well, we'll say this is where, what I've heard where there's leaning in is really those boards of universities and then the board of education. So keep raising awareness because I don't think everyone's where I was kind of shocked to actually go and look at who's on our board of education and look at their backgrounds, which I spent some time doing. I think it's worthwhile to look.
So that kind of sums up our, our list, but we would, we would love to hear if there's anything else you, you all have brewing or need support from us on.
You know, everything, everything at state level boils down to money. And we're, we're today, for example, we're, we're talking about Medicaid shortfalls. We're talking about ABC short, ABC revenue, ABC is the cash cow. They've been most wanted to transform it for the sake of transformation. And it's losing money all of a sudden. Now, who, who would have figured, right? Ahead is now, I spent all day worrying about that stuff and meetings with that. So, and then talking about the 529 problem. But it's a good problem to have. At 529, you save money for families to save money for college programs. We, we've got a surplus, people that, people who, who have paid, we've paid a hundred, we've paid their contracts. We've got over a billion dollars of extra money. They've, we've paid their contracts that the contracts have been fulfilled. What do we do with that money? Do we return it to people that might not be around anymore or their families? Or do we use it to invest and give, invest in higher education, give more young people the opportunity to, to get higher education? I mean, there, there are a whole lot of things to think of. The main thing you can do for us is, you know, I, I think in politics, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. If, if there's an issue, most legislators, Democratic or Republican, do the, my, my view is that in good, they operate in good faith. They do the best they can based with the best information they have. If you have information about a topic, get it to us. Don't assume we have the best information. Don't assume we're talking to the right people. Don't assume that the last person whispering in our ear was telling us the right, the right thing. Get, contact us. I mean, we, we read the emails. We read the letters. We, we talk to people on the phone all the time. Get in touch with us. Just keep, keep the conversation going.
So before we open this up to questions and any public comment, was curious. I forgot to mention just sustainability and any, any legislation supporting public education with. I know that we've applied for grants for solar or the city has, but if there's any legislation to support schools with that, that's not, I don't know, it always feels like it's grant based and, and we don't qualify for some of those based on need and just the local.
A lot of it is grant based, but we're looking at a lot of things that I can't tell you that something specific is coming down the pike. But you, you ought to, you ought to pay attention to what comes out over the next few weeks. Because I think, I think that this is something that's going to, I mean, I know school divisions now around the state, you see the more, you see more solar panels all the time in every corner of the Commonwealth places you wouldn't, their wattage from solar. So if it can happen in Bass County, it can happen here. It's happened in Henry, in Hanover, all over the place.
Yeah, I think to that point, that it's relevant, I think, not just grants and funding, but we come up against Dominion. That is a problem, that Dominion Energy is where that stops.
And, and the problem right now, well, with, that I'm aware of with Dominion that involves schools, involves some higher education institutions and some, some school divisions around the state where they, they have made it more difficult to transmit electricity from the, back from the, the solar into the system. And they're, they're not, they're, they're making it more difficult by raising the cost of transmission. They still in lines. And so we're trying to, we're trying to figure through that. There was legislation on that last session. And, and general is not going to be considered. The general assembly is not going to put their thumb on the scales of justice. And there, there is litigation involving that before the state corporation commission right now.
I, I don't have much to add, other than I agree with you. It's, it's one of the things I campaigned on and I started in ACES is what we called it at Albemarle. I imagine you'll have something similar where we just had an environmental sustainability committee in our, with our schools because there's so much ability to create better outcomes for environment. When you have big footprint and all the bus miles, y'all are a little less so than Albemarle, but there's a lot that we could do. And it always felt like we were fighting over crumbs and it felt like from Dominion. And it felt like whatever our wins were, were someone else's losses, which just wasn't a good feeling because we were like fighting over the wattage. And okay, we got some big award and we get to put up our solar, but that just means like, oh, Charlottesville gets less or, you know, green. I say too much because y'all don't need to hear me just on my soapbox. But yeah, Dominion is a really big issue. We didn't have a banner year for environmental legislation, even with a bunch of Democrats in the majority. We just didn't. The biggest bill I personally hear about in Charlottesville is community because Charlottesville is a solar energy hub. We have a ton of solar companies. So this is like our local, where money comes from. Yeah, this is like our, our field. So the biggest one I know of that is going to be reintroduced, some version of it. It's actually, but something to really force localities to confront how they approve solar citing bills. Cause there's actually a lot of pushback from local board of supervisors and councils where they don't want to put solar up. And they kind of hamstring these companies because it costs a lot of money to apply and then potentially get denied. So that's where I see legislation around. I'm really committed to making sure it passed. I've, I've learned sort of a little bit, lay the land and it's a little bit of, I don't want to be all depressing, but it's a landscape where Dominion is very big and they need to be smaller, if that makes sense.
That's a bill I carried last year. Rip Sullivan carried it in the house and it will be reintroduced. Here's the problem. In 2020, we passed legislation called the Clean Economy Act. And that legislation guaranteed that we would by 2050 remove carbon from our energy production. But we're not going to do that. We're adding 5%, more than 5%, almost 6% to our energy demand every year with data centers. We're not going to do it unless we radically ramp up our development of renewable energy. Here's the thing, you know, if, if, if Dominion or anybody else wants to put a nuclear power plant in Albemarle County, they're not going to come to the Albemarle County Board of Supervisors. They're going to go to FERC and they're going to go to the SCC. But if I want to put an industrial sized solar field in any locality, I've got to deal with the board of supervisors first. And boards of supervisors and so that all solar developments, the citing issue is going to be probably one of the biggest issues we deal with over the next few years. Now, whether, because we're going to have to figure out how we're going to put, where, where we're going to develop the, the renewable energy. We're not just talking about solar. You know, there's a, there's a wind, wherever the wind has been proposed, nobody wants it in their backyard. Nobody wants anything in their backyard. They want, people want things. We all want things. We just don't want it in our backyard, right?
This ties to math education Albemarle, and I got this nasty gram, which I'm sure maybe y'all have had the privilege of getting one of these, where it was like this math calculation this guy had done. He was like, okay, so they want to go electric. Well, that means that with each, each bus costs 5,000 and they've got 350 buses and it's all, he came up to a total that it was going to cost us a billion dollars in the first year, all because we took these two electric buses. That's when I realized people have some misconceptions around what it means to be sustainable. So if I'm getting, we're getting pushed back over electric buses, you can imagine it's just a fraught field. And anyway, we're, we're going to continue to fight because it's important. So, and hopefully y'all got your electric buses as well.
I think just on that note, like those are kind of macro approaches to sustainable energy for the Commonwealth. Charlottesville doesn't have land to put on a solar farm. We don't have high winds to capture energy through wind. And so we really need the targeted assistance to help with getting solar in the electric school buses. And so I think that it can't just be the big, for us, I mean selfishly, we need help at a micro level.
That would be a great place if y'all want to leave. So sorry, y'all have someone, yeah, yeah, yeah. Who's on the Chris, who's on the, involved in this field. So you have a wonderful resource on your board who maybe can help if they're necessarily the same.
Wants to give us some of their land. Let me take it back. That's a different legislative priority.
And I did a really poor job of trying to channel some of what he would be saying or advocating for.
Well, it's good.
But he, I'm sure has reached out or will reach out to you. So I tried to at least shine a little bit of what, what he would be asking. So. All right. Any other comments, questions from school board members? Dr. Gurley, you have anything else you'd like to add? Okay, we do have. I don't know.
One, yes, ma'am. Absolutely. So largest landowner in the city of Charlottesville is University of Virginia. And they don't pay taxes. And so I'm wondering where you fall in payment in lieu of taxes and what that would look like to strategically put money into public housing and public schools, affordable housing and public schools, and what that might look like. Put some pressure on the university to do good, do right.
I don't think it's a bad idea, but I think you might have a constitutional problem with it. And we're, we're basically having the same discussion right now around VCU and what, with a building, a public safety building. They tried to acquire, are they, they, there was a public safety building they were selling for, they were developing. And VCU made a commitment to make a payment in lieu of taxes and tested it as, as being beyond when something that the, the university doesn't, didn't have the ability to, to promise. And so VCU has backed off the payment. Richmond's threatened to sue, and that's probably where that, that issue will get figured out. My, my guess is until that issue gets figured out, it's not likely to be something that the general assembly takes up.
I am fairly new to this. That's why I was waiting until you answered because I know you, this isn't the first time I, you've heard it, I'm sure. I think ideologically and in principle, I agree, but I think the practical side of me is thinking that why would they ever, you know, why would they ever do that? Why would they ever, they would fight tooth and nail? Why wouldn't we all fight for like whatever agreements we have in place that help us benefit our organizations? I've not had that conversation with them. And I guess my, my only feedback is that would be one where it would be great to have kind of more grass, like me having a conversation where I say.
Our own student council passed a resolution to file a program and they kind of said, thank you, back to class. And so I think.
I mean, I think, yeah, so we can contribute to it and it would need to be bigger and growing. And I'm only thinking of my own experiences, which is, was New Haven. I think there was, when I was a student there, there was a big push, like marches and all this. And eventually they did a voluntary, they do voluntary tax payment in New Haven. You know, that's the solution they reached there.
Yeah. So you asked why? And I think that's the answer, right?
But, but that's private school too.
Yeah, maybe. I mean, and I know some of our counselors have really kind of carried this as far as a desire to help with just funding for the city. So.
Interested in hearing from the community. And Jim Ryan's been open to conversations. And I think if he continues to hear that from legislators and members of communities, school board members alike. I think that, that continues to, right? We have conversations to have conversations sometimes and to let folks know we're still paying attention. That they have a quiet and endowment. And again, largest landowner, landowner in the city that doesn't contribute to city schools in a financial way.
Yeah, noted. I'll wish out to want to. He's the one who's having those conversations recently, right?
And, and councillor Payne, I think has been really involved with that. Thank you. All right. Anybody here care to make public comment? No? All right. Any last comments? Any concerns from you, sir? All right. Anything else from the two of you?
Now I'm trying to get my institutional knowledge whispered in my ear as I.
All right. Well, again, I appreciate, we appreciate both of you and the work that you do for this community and for us. So thank you and thank you to.
Can I say one thing?
Absolutely.
To all the staff who prepared this, y'all did an excellent job. I've been through a few of these. I've actually been as a school board member too. So this has been really concise and well organized and has touched on a lot of the issues that have actually been on the forefront of legislators minds. So you did a good job. I put this together.
We do have a good team.